Okay, we've completed the town meeting and we'll call the board of select meeting to order, and we've already done the pledge religion, so we'll pass on that. Are there any additional agenda or consent calendar items? Okay, seeing none. Any delegations? Is there anyone that would like to address the board of selectment? Moving on, next thing is the approval of the meeting minutes of April 6th.
Move to approve the regular meeting minutes of April 6th, 2022, as submitted.
It's been moved. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded. Any comments or corrections? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstention? Carries. And the next thing will be the consent calendar.
Move to approve the consent calendar for the regular meeting of April 20, 2022, in the amount of $36,248.08.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions? It carries unanimously. Moving on to... Sandy, do a really good job of this. There we go. Looking to get an appropriation of up to $70,000 for crack repairs on the Niantic Bay boardwalk, on the sidewalk, on the length of the bay side of the boardwalk. That's all cement. Mr. Scher is going to give us a little bit of presentation. He's done some of the background work on that and has a recommendation for us. Bill?
Good evening. Bill Scher, Deputy Director of Public Work, also a resident. You probably have all seen the hairline cracks around the boardwalk over the years. When we designed the boardwalk, we were looking to build a very long-lasting structure. We use specialized steel sheeting that lasts for a much longer time, and we used a very advanced concrete that lasts a very, very long time. When you do that, it's a very dense concrete, but it also is slightly weaker than normal concrete, but it doesn't have to handle the stresses that it would in an environment like a road or anything, so it's just water and waves. But the trade-off is that slightly weaker concrete has a tendency to crack when it shrinks. All concrete shrinks as it dries, so it's a trade-off. Long life, chance of cracks. So, we rolled the dice and we have some hairline cracks out there. They are mostly visual, but in long-term, you know, we anticipate this concrete lasting 75, 80, 100 years. So, long-term, it is an avenue for saltwater to get into and also spall at the cracks, so we want to fix them permanently. Normally, when you fix hairline cracks like this, you would coat it with a solution every three to four years to seal the cracks, but that's an ongoing cost every three or four years. Or you can use an epoxy, low viscosity liquid that you put in the cracks. The only problem is epoxy turns yellow and is very ugly. Very good product, but it's just not very good-looking. So recently, they've come out with a product called Matchcrete, which is an... it is a... I've got a big fancy word for it. It's an alephatic urethane. So, it is very similar to the properties of epoxy, but yet it's clear and UV sunlight does not affect it and discolor it. So, and it is low viscosity, so our plan is to hire a contractor to clean out the cracks a little bit. You put this low viscosity, almost like water, into the cracks. It goes all the way down to the crack, fills up the crack, and then we top-dress it with quartz sand and/or like a titanium dioxide powder to try to get the coloration of the boardwalk. Hopefully, when we're done, you don't even notice that there was a crack there, and it is sealed permanently. That's the plan. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
As we pointed out before, the source of this would be FEMA money we got from Hurricane Sandy, and one of the things we felt to do is we've seen the surface cracks and Bill did a great job of explaining. Now's the best time to address it. Any questions for Bill? Ann?
Yeah, I have a couple. So, the life expectancy of the repairs would be kind of equivalent to the life expectancy of the cement that's already there. So, these are permanent repairs?
These are permanent repairs, yes.
Okay. And then, so what would be... when would they be done? And can you, in a similar question, can you walk on them, you know, considering there's so much use of the boardwalk? Can you walk on these repairs soon thereafter?
Within an hour or so.
I see.
You'll be out there with a grinder and a vacuum, so I anticipate we'd probably set up barricades to keep, you know, the grinder... I think we'd keep it open, but we'd have just half of it barricaded off where they're working and then move over. That's... I'm thinking that's how we'll do it.
Okay. So, like, looking down the boardwalk, one half would be...
No, well, we'd probably just have a work zone.
Work zone.
50 feet, you know, it's a 10-foot wide boardwalk, 50 feet by 5.
Right, right.
Work there, move over, work there, and then just keep going down.
So, single work area is...
That's what I'm anticipating right now, that, you know, I haven't gone through the full vetting yet, but that's what I'm anticipating.
Any other questions? Ann?
So, after this is done, then will, as time progresses, will more hairline fractures develop?
No, this should be it. It's a shrinkage crack. Concrete shrinks. There's actually steel mesh inside the whole concrete structure. The steel mesh is not to hold the concrete together, it's to prevent it from shrinking and cracking. So, we have shrinkage steel in the concrete, but it's, like I said, it's a trade-off. Really strong or really long-lasting concrete, possible hairline cracks. The cracks are really hairlined.
So, once it shrinks, then that's as much as it shrinks?
Yes.
It's not going to shrink some more or, like, increase again or...
Nope. If you... They all popped up within six months, so...
Okay.
They're the same ones that have been there since six months. And actually, the Amtrak portion also has cracks. That's a different reasoning, which I don't want to get into, but we're going to fix those while we're out there. It's slightly less, but we'll fix those two.
Any other questions?
Yes. Could you tell me how much money is left in the FEMA flood account? What's this money taken out?
I believe right now there's about 170-something thousand in there. This would take it... Anna's got the...
Yeah, it's written right on the...
Yeah, it's written... Oh, yeah. Yeah, it's 176,466.
One more question?
Yes.
If this is approved, what is your timeframe in actually repairing it, fixing the cracks?
Relatively soon. I don't think we'd want to be doing it at the peak of the season, and I believe the temperature... I think this works in the majority of temperatures, like you could still do it in fall and spring. So, if we could... Not sure we'd be able to pull it off this spring, but definitely by fall.
Okay. Thanks.
Okay. Any other questions? Any motion?
So, move to approve a special appropriation and transfer in the amount of $70,000 from CNRE Fund 32, account number 32-70-300-500-999, parentheses Townwide Projects, and establish an account titled NBB Concrete Repairs, more specifically for the structural and cosmetic repair of the concrete cracks on the Niantic Bay boardwalk, and forward to the Board of Finance for approval. This requires a town meeting.
Is there a second?
A second.
Seconded. Moving seconded. Any further comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention? It carries unanimously. Moving on, and this is just for discussion, sealant for the public safety building. If you notice, Bill's not going anywhere. Bill's the one that brought this to my attention back when there was some concern about some moisture, and we wanted to be sure it wasn't the roof, which it turned out is not to. The roof is fine.
Thanks.
But he's providing some information here. He's done some research. He has talked to the architect that did the public safety building, and he's got a... basically can explain the whole situation a whole lot better than I can. Mr. Scher?
Basically, the exterior of that building was... it was built in the 80s, mid-80s, and in the mid-80s, they developed a new product called Split Face Block. It's very visually appealing, and at the time, they didn't realize that it actually absorbs water way more than they wanted it to. So subsequently, they don't really make that anymore, and so any building built with Split Face Block in the 80s and early 90s usually has a water... not infiltration, but the water soaks into the brick, which is not the ideal situation. So currently, this building absorbs water to some degree, and the best solution is to seal the building. It'll probably have to be... Well, this is a very specialized project. There are architects that really understand and know how to do this properly. There are many different products to choose from when you're sealing a building. It's a very advanced scientific field at this point, so that we're outside of our scope in terms of how to actually seal this building properly. And if you're going to seal the building, there are minor defects in the building, minor cracking, caulking, you can see in the pictures, there are just minor defects. And if you're going to seal the building, you definitely want to fix minor defects first before you seal the building, otherwise you'll be, you know, putting a coat of paint inside of a crack. That's not what you want. You want to fix the crack before you put the coat of paint on top of it. So, we put out an RFP to a bunch of architects that we trust, and we received two responses from Jakunski-Humes and also Silver Petraselli, who are on the job already. I had talked to them previously about this and got a feel for what was going on and what we should be doing, and we reached out to two different people, and we have two different proposals that we're in the process of reviewing. So, in order to make this project a truly complete project, we should fix the defects in the building, minor defects, and seal it. From what I can grasp from these architects, you know, the products are getting so much better that we may be looking at a 10-to-15-year lifespan out of a sealant. Some of the stuff they're working on now is temporary, they're calling it. I mean, not temporary, permanent, but, you know, that's probably not quite the case. So, in order to get a really complete project, this should be done.
One of the things, when Bill brought this to me and, you know, he mentioned, you know, I'm confident Bill's done enough research for us to go out and get a cost, but especially with the building, I think it's very important that we have an architect, someone who, as he has stated, has experts in the field that can tell us exactly what needs to be done, their recommendation and follow-through. For the next meeting, we'll have... I'll provide the quotes and so forth from the two contractors, you know, from the two architects, so we can take action on it. But this, we'll give you a chance to look at it if any questions pop up over time go on and so forth like that. One of the things, too, we have done some research, was this brought to our attention prior to all the work being done on it. And Ann, you found some stuff today when you were... or you brought some stuff to my attention today.
Right. Well, yeah, I just want... I served on Vision Committee and just went back in time and looked at the facility's assessment. So, there were references, you know, to the block and mortar and so forth, but there was more detail actually in the... I have it here, the schematic design report. That's where you get the architects and the basic engineering look at, you know, the inspection, if you will, of the exterior, the envelope, et cetera, and the materials used. So, it's great you're having... you've had those conversations or begun the conversations with Silver Petraselli. I don't know who on their staff or in that group of folks that serviced us, you know, was responsible for that inspection, but definitely it was looked at. At that point, there wasn't, you know, any grand discussion, what I've looked at so far on, you know, absorption of water and potential seep, but in that facilities assessment, it just says "review again in 10 years," and this was back in 2019. So, that was one suggestion. And then there was also about sealants. There was something about raking out the old sealants and providing new sealants at control joints, windows, door openings, and then soffits in need of repair. Those are the closest I could find. But I was glad to see that... I mean, they... it was definitely part of an inspection, but it was, you know... And you don't... also, I guess, you don't know what this material... when is this going to start to be visible? Or are there other issues, like drainage issues or anything like that?
Well, the sealants, actually, replacing the sealants was part of the project and it was done.
Right.
Around the windows and the doors, that's basically the caulking.
Right.
So, that was actually completed as part of the project.
Right.
And the reason why we got involved is, as you know, Joe's in charge of almost everything. Building maintenance is one of them. So, as we started moving, you know, getting to the point where he's going to take over the building, I was over there, we were fixing the grounds, and it came to our attention, and so we wanted to get it addressed before we take over the building from a building maintenance perspective.
So, just a question. So, once the roof was fixed and we knew, you know, water isn't coming from there, you know, in a heavy storm, but... So, what has it been like? You know, like, what have these situations been?
There was some water issues, and the roof fixed almost all of them.
Mm-hmm.
There are still some minor infiltration issues, but the roof took care of the vast majority of the issue.
Okay.
We did have one of the... And here again, most rainfall this one occurred. There was one of those driving rains at the right angle one night that came in, there was a little bit through the dispatch area and so forth like that. So, you know, the failure is, you know, it's rare, but this needs to be addressed, and we'll talk to Anna when we're done. Bill, Anna can give us a little idea of, you know, how it's going to be funded.
I think, and something I read, too, the north bricks are not the split face, I think.
No, they're regular cinder block.
So, you would not have that same issue there?
You'd want to seal it also... Ideally, if you have a block like this, if the water gets in it, it comes down and goes somewhere.
Right, right.
Back in the 80s, they didn't quite understand how that worked, so parts of the building are not constructed ideally.
Okay.
But in the back, if you don't do that properly, then you have water that doesn't... can't go somewhere. So, the plan is to look at all those issues as well as the infiltration and the crack and address all of them. It sounds simple, but it's a very complex project.
Thanks.
Yes.
Do you have a question? When you seal it, are you going to be sealing then the entire building or is it just certain parts?
The entire building.
The entire building. And does that just entail putting something like over the brick or do you have to remove the brick?
No. From what I understand, they have sealants that you would spray on using a sprayer, and they actually absorb into the block and chemically bond with the block and the pores. So, they have new... they're coming out with new stuff all the time, so that's why we're moving towards permanent as opposed to temporary. 10 years ago, you had a five-year sealant, that's all you had. Now, with their technological advances, we're moving much more towards permanent. Did that answer your question?
Yeah, no, it did. Yeah.
Other questions?
Yes. You mentioned two companies that were going to offer bids or you're going to seek bids from.
These were architects that we got so that they can prepare plans and specifications to go out to bid for contractors.
Because we do require three bids under policy.
Well, this is professional services, so we don't... it doesn't quite... it's not really bids, it's a request for a proposal. Professional services, you more rely on their reputation and their abilities that you already know of, but we did go out to... I sent it out to four, and we received two proposals.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Bill? Because we have to... Anna, we need to ask you about, you know, the funding for this, because obviously this, you know, would not come out of, you know, the project... or actually, wait, if you'd like to come out and comment.
So, within the project fund, we have some premium dollars that the town received when we went out to market to sell the notes and the bonds for the project, and we have a balance of a little over $419,000. So, it is permissible to use some of these funds to put work into the building. Typically, what we use these funds for is to pay the financing costs of the project, and then, once the project is completed, we would use this as a source to pay the interest on the bonds. However, it is also permissible, as I said, to use these funds towards work on the facility. So, this is a source that we would propose to use for the sealing of the building.
And Bill, you would agree there's nothing to indicate it would get to that level as far as the remaining funds, which he said over $400,000? Yeah, okay. That's nice to, you know, do that, so... Any questions for Anna? Okay. Thank you. And for the next one, we'll have that, because it wouldn't have gone to a town meeting until a month from now anyway because of the fact that finance would not get a chance to see it until their meeting next month. So, Bill and Anna, thank you so much for all the work you've done on this. Bill getting, first of all, bringing this to everyone's attention. Very much appreciated. Thank you. Moving on, and Bill, here again, you might as well stay because we're back onto something else that involves you with the... and it's in our package tonight with an update from Bill on an email he sent out regarding some of the concerns before we can sign the lease with the Historical Society to turn the Boston Post Road facility up there. It was in your packets. He just did this, as you can see, yesterday afternoon. You know, some of his concerns, we do have the sample lease, which I'm going to sit down with Norm Peck and go through that, but the primary things that Bill has brought to concern is to secure the IT room. That's the one we have that equipment in. The generator controls and emergency off button in the main room, they plan on using for the museum, we're basically moving those. Antenna wires, preliminary for what do they want to do. So, we need to sit down and come up with basically a design of what the building will look like. Bill, I'll let you address it some more though, since you actually were at the facility.
Yep. Well, I actually wrote that email after being here for 10 hours, and I didn't intend it to go in your package, so... and I haven't read it since. Hopefully, it was good.
Yeah.
Yeah, there are... it is a state 911 fiber hub, so that's a very important room up there to keep it secure, safe, and also with power. So, that's why the generator stays, and we need to meet with the fire marshal, the building official, and understand how... Normally, all this would be in a secure facility anyway, like a police station or something like that, so we just need to understand the rules and regulations with regards to all that equipment. You know, where do you put the emergency off button for the generator? I don't know that yet. We need to get that information. And these are some structural changes that need to be made, and we're hoping to incorporate them in the lease because it sounds like the Historical Society is going to be upgrading and fixing the building up anyway on the inside. So, hopefully, we can incorporate these into the lease, and also any protocols on what's necessary from their perspective to deal with the things we have in the building. You know, there's a lot of cables that go up front with numerous antennas up there. We still use those antennas. A lot of our data goes up there via the fiber and then out on the antennas for the radio systems, emergency dispatch, all sorts of different things.
Is any of this equipment going to be moved over, transferred over to the public safety building?
A lot of it has been.
But you're keeping some here anyway, and this is what you're saying you need to protect?
It's a state... the state of Connecticut fiber network is very expensive to do anything to. So, in order to move that fiber hub, it's like a half a million dollars.
Okay.
So, it's a great space... the place to have that fiber hub is right there.
Okay.
So, I think that's what it boiled down to, is trying to move something like that was extraordinary. We could have moved all of our stuff easily, except the antennas. So, the antennas have to stay, that's staying, we just need to work around the condition.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Are there any security... I mean, are there any security concerns about... I mean, you have the fiber hub right there. When they section it off, are they going to do it in a way that someone couldn't tamper with it or tap into it?
That's what we got to figure out.
There are ways you could secure it and that, but you'll have to meet the standards set forth by, you know, since it's... what's housed in there will have to meet certain standards. It can be done though.
And it's right on, you know, the PSDN fiber network that goes straight to the PD. They could have cameras sitting there watching live action right at the dispatch center. So, you could have somebody sitting there watching what's going on in the parking lot, in the room, live feed all the time.
Because right now, we have to still have the same concerns because the building's unoccupied, so it still has to be secured.
Right.
So, it's all possible. We just have to figure out how to do it properly. That's all.
Other questions? Thank you, Bill. We need... No, I think we're done with you tonight, aren't we?
Thanks.
You can come in five minutes late tomorrow. How's that? Okay. Okay, moving on. It's on tonight, the FEMA flood regulations has finally been reviewed by town attorney and brought forward to us, and Mr. Maholland is here to talk to us if there are any questions because we have to take this to a public hearing. So, Bill, if you'd like to get up and give us a quick brief presentation?
Yeah, I can give you a very brief presentation in your package. You will find a packet containing a memo from me, an email from the Connecticut DEP. It's the second item, which is probably the most important, and you'll find a copy of the existing flood ordinance, and then you will find a copy of the zoning regulations. In October of last year, the zoning commission updated the FEMA ordinances that are contained within the zoning regulations, which really regulate FEMA in the community. Because we have three beach areas that have their own zoning, our zoning doesn't apply, so therefore, my zoning regs for FEMA don't apply, so the town created a flood ordinance to address that issue. In October, and prior to that, I had sent up to DEP, to the FEMA folks, our regulations and asked for an update and some opinions, and during that discussion, we also just brought up the town ordinance, and that hadn't been updated in a long time. So, this is really a housekeeping issue. The zoning regs have been updated. We wanted to essentially swap out the flood ordinance and replace them with the zoning regulations with a slight modification because in the proposal, any appeal for a variance would be made to the Board of Selectment in an ordinance and not the zoning Board of Appeals, where you would go with a zoning regulation. The changes are, in zoning, we have what's called a substantial improvement, and it was a 10-year rule. A substantial improvement is when you improve your structure, your home, just the structure up to 50% of the market value of the home, and that's over a 10-year period. That 10 years was originally established as part of a menu that was mandated by FEMA from 1 to 10 years. We chose 10, and what we found over time is some people who may have inherited a home may not be able to really afford to maintain it if it's in a flood zone or on the shorefront. So, we were seeing some exterior deterioration of buildings, so we reduced it to two years, which has been endorsed by FEMA and the state. So, we've gone to two years. We proposed that, the same thing in the ordinance, so that they will match the zoning regulations. And in addition, we removed the billing official, the zoning regs, named the billing official and myself, and what that had done is created a lot of confusion, and the regulations were not being applied as they should be. So, DEP agreed that we should have one person doing it. It's been done in my office for decades, and it's been contained in the zoning regulations. So, in essence, we've removed that. So, this is just a swap-out of the flood ordinance that you have now, substituted by the zoning regulations with a slight change in the appeal process, which is not in your packet. I will add another sheet. It came up this afternoon in a discussion with Ms. Attorney Zamacher, who's already looked at this, and I came across it, said, "Ah, we overlooked that. Let's correct that." So, we'll correct that before you get to hearing, should you move forward. And that essentially covers what I have. If there are any questions, I'm happy to ask them.
Any questions for our zoning official? Okay.
Well, go ahead. Oh, sure. So, is the approach... and I think it was... I just want to be sure. It seemed that there were two approaches. One was to make the ordinance identical to the zoning regulation.
Yes.
Or to revoke the ordinance and just have the zoning regulation control everything. But which approach are you...
We are looking to swap out the ordinance because we would have to approach the three beach areas that have their own zoning and convince them to give it up, and no one really wanted to go down that pathway, which was much simpler and more efficient to just... to delete the existing flood ordinance and have it match our zoning regs so that we're all on the same page, and everything's applied equally to the beach areas as well as the rest of the community that are affected by our FEMA regs.
So, you would be deleting the ordinance in its entirety?
Right, and replacing it with the zoning regulation. Right, and replacing it with the zoning regulation, that's all been reviewed by FEMA, as you'll see in the email that I attached to my sheet, so that you would see some of the discussion, and I've been working with this individual at the DEP for years, and she's been very helpful in making sure that we're updated with our regulations, because they are constantly changing, FEMA is constantly changing what they do and what we have to do, so we're updating almost annually now.
So the codification of the regulation would control everything?
The regulation, the ordinance would apply only to the beach areas, the zoning regulations apply to the entire community, and that's because by special act of legislature, these beach areas have their own zoning.
So, I just, so, so I want to be sure I'm understanding, you're still going to have the ordinance, it's just the language is going to be identical to what's?
In the zoning code, so it's all equitable across the board, and it's applied equally, yes.
You still keep the ordinance, but the language will be the same as in the regulation?
Yes, yes, that's correct.
Got it.
Okay, any other questions for Mr. Maholland? Okay, we have, nothing there, so we'll move on to the FEMA flood regs for scheduling a public hearing.
Okay, yep.
Thank you.
Town of Eastline Board of Selectmen, notice of public hearing, move the following, notice of public hearing regarding adoption of an amendment to an ordinance entitled Flood Damage Prevention, Town Ordinance, Chapter 151. Notice is hereby given of a public hearing to be held by the Eastline Board of Selectmen at 7:00 PM on May 4th, 2022, at the Eastline Town Hall, 108 Pennsylvania Avenue, Niantic, Connecticut, to consider the adoption of an amendment to an ordinance entitled Flood Damage Prevention, Town Ordinance, Chapter 151. Said ordinance provides regulatory controls for flooding in the town of Eastline. A copy of the full text of the proposed ordinance is on file for public inspection at the office of the Eastline Town Clerk, 108 Pennsylvania Avenue, Niantic, Connecticut, and at http://eeltownhall.com, to which reference may be had. Interested persons are invited to attend and be heard, dated at Eastline, Connecticut on this day, April 20, 2022, Eastline Board of Selectmen.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded. Any further comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Carried unanimously.
Thanks, Bill.
Thank you, Bill. Okay, appointments to boards and commissions, we have a couple appointments, and Mr. Salter is here tonight, so, he's indicated an interest to become a member of the Inland Wetlands Agency, Dan, if you'd like to.
Yeah, yeah, do you want to? Do you want to?
Okay, I move to appoint Leonard Salter of Three Pepperidge Lane, Eastline, as a member on the Inland Wetlands Agency for the town of Eastline, with a term to expire on January 8th, 2024.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, seconded. Any comments? Thank you, sir, for stepping up to volunteer your time. Excellent. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Carried unanimously. And if you, anytime Town Hall is open, you can stop in the town clerk's office and get sworn in, it'll be all set.
That's a bonus of the, of the appointment?
Well, no, you get sworn in, and, yeah, once you get sworn in, then you, you have to be sworn in before you can actually sit and?
I missed, come to be sworn in, I think I just come whenever I want.
Oh, you're always welcome to come to Town Hall. And there's one more.
Okay. Move to appoint Amy Cabanas, 75 Smith Street, Niantic, as an alternate member on the Niantic River Watershed Board of, for the town of Eastline, with a term to expire on January 5th, 2026.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been seconded. Any comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? That carries unanimously. Moving on to ex officio reports, I'll start to my right, I'll start with Aunt Chikalo.
Okay, so I don't have much on the inland wetlands, on Historic Properties Commission, they are going to start, let me just get my notes here, they're kicking off on June 11th, 2022, rolling out, selling signs that people can put on their houses, historic house plaques, and you can put the, the date that your house was built, and it's for anybody in town, and I guess people can purchase them online, it's going to be $106.35. 25% of the proceeds would be divided between the, the three houses, Brookside Farm Museum, Samuel Smith, and the Lee House. And this is example, actually, of Mr. Cunningham's, right?
I like that, that's nice, yeah.
And it comes with, I guess, two, like, screws that you can screw right in to the house.
Yep, it'd be nice, my son lives right down here, his house was built in 1880, so that'd be really good.
Yeah, so whoever, it doesn't have to necessarily be an old house, it can be anybody in town, and so I think they're very excited about rolling this, this out.
Excellent.
And that's all I have.
Yeah, I had a couple meetings, Monday, April 11th, was a Board of Education, just a couple of things important there, last day of school is June 15th, that was determined. Things are going along, spring sports are, you know, in full swing, and junior prom coming up, and senior prom, May 28th. The board approved a paraprofessional contract, which will begin this July, and go through June 30th of 2025, so that was approved. There's a retreat planned for the Board of Education in May, details yet to be worked out, and there were various votes on adding or deleting or revising certain of their policies, so that covered that meeting, because then the Board of Ed came here for the, for the Board of Finance meeting thereafter, it was an early meeting. On Tuesday, April 12th, there was a special meeting of the Water and Sewer Commission to have, begin discussion on the water and sewer budgets, the upcoming budgets, and Joe Brugal, you know, gave a great presentation of information, spreadsheets, both on the sewer side, water side, and went through a lot of information. The discussion will continue at the regular meeting of the Water and Sewer, you know, Commission meeting coming up a week from yesterday. Basically, inflation is definitely an issue for these budgets, there was quite a bit of discussion about the limitations on the sewer side, because there were fewer customers than on the water side, but we do have a healthy sewer assessment, which continues for capital and maintenance projects. And the Assistant Utility Engineer, Matt, and I don't know Matt's last name, but he gave a very good presentation about water rate analysis, and there was good discussion thereafter about perhaps thinking about an unassigned fund balance on the water side in establishing that, so it was all around a very good opportunity for the board members to talk about the budget, and, and really get into, get in the weeds a bit before their upcoming meeting, so, that's it for me.
Okay, I, before I go, again, we, I had down for discussion 2022, 2023 budget, but we've already adopted, that was just there as a placeholder in case we needed to revisit that. Board of Finance is having their public hearing on the 25th, so that's the only thing I meant to there, and I'm sorry, I missed that.
I missed it too.
Yep, you'd never do that. Dan, it's all yours.
Yep, so I attended the Parks and Rec meeting on April 14th, and, let's see, we have a few events coming up, the Niantic Boardwalk 5K is April 23rd, so that's coming right?
Saturday.
This Saturday, and then Touch a Truck is May 21st, the Celebrate Eastline is July 16th, so people can put that on their calendar, so I'll just point that out. There was a interesting presentation about, it's, they're called composting toilets, I mean, it's, you know, the problem is having access to bathrooms on the boardwalk and different areas, and in, I think in Old Sabre Canyon, Essex, they've contracted with a company that does composting toilets, so you're not using water, it's compost, and they seem to be very effective, and placement is, you don't have to worry about having a water source, so they're looking into that, I think that's something that may be of interest to the town, so I'll be interested to see what they find out about that. The other thing at that meeting was, there was some interest from the public, a couple of individuals spoke on, hoping that they were, we might get interested in creating pickleball courts, I guess that's a really popular sport, it's really taking hold in a lot of communities, other towns have pickleboard?
Pickleball.
Pickleball, not board, pickleball, all right, pickleball courts, that's what I know, and they were trying to get the interest of Parks and Rec, and I think they're going to take that up and really look into it, and see if there's a way that they can expand, you know, places to do that in Eastline, so, apparently, there's a great interest, I don't know much about it, as I demonstrated, but seems to be something that people really, really want, so hopefully, they'll be able to find a way to do it, and that's pretty much it for me.
Okay, Roseanne?
Yes, I was interested in the, your mention of the composting toilets, because I tried to get those for, where we put the bath, the bathrooms down at, under the bridge, down at Cheney Park, and, so there was quite a bit of research done on that, as to whether it would be appropriate, and I was disappointed that it was decided that that was not possible in that area.
In that area.
But I think it, it surprised me, because when one travels, and along, along I-95 and the rest areas, there are many that have those composting toilets that, I mean, certainly very energy efficient, so perhaps when you meet next with them, you might ask, I think Joe Brugal looked into it and Bill Shear, so they might have some information on it, as to why it wasn't, why it wouldn't work in that particular location.
I think I may be able to address that.
Okay.
So, the, the problem there is where the water comes up, the flood, we're just talking about flood plain, but that's, so because of that, it's not appropriate for that type of area, but, in, you know, slightly higher elevations, they could do the composting toilets, so, that's why I don't think you're able to use it down at Cheney Park, because of the water level coming up.
So, zoning lasts, last two weeks, two weeks ago, zoning was canceled, it's on for tomorrow night, and I think that's all I've heard for tonight.
Okay, between Ann Santo, Dan, and Roseanne, we've been talking about basically sewage and stuff like that, so, anyway, moving on to my report, some, just some COVID-19 updates, little bit of a bump in the positivity rate, it's up around 7% over the last seven days, I was talking to our Lidside rep today, still, they're not too concerned, because the hospitalizations are up a little over the last week, but not concerned. The New London County, which was under the green, is now yellow, so if you're immunosuppressed or, you know, at risk, they recommend that you consider using a mask. Last, right after the last meeting, last, on April 7th, at the Senior Center, Attorney General, State Attorney General Tong was here to talk to the seniors about elder abuse, both physical and emotional, Holly Cheeseman and I were there, it was a really good exchange, I gave them a lot of contacts, so if people are worried about calling, and he stressed that if you know a senior who's in distress, either physically or emotionally, from a loved one, which is normally the ones that cause the biggest problem for them, call, you know, on their behalf, so, and don't hesitate, you know, but it was a really good presentation, he spent about an hour just talking to people, it was very, very nice. Regarding, we have talked in the past about a charter revision, in June, I'm planning to have town attorney come and talk to us, and specify, and, and lay out, you know, the process to doing that, and having a charge and appointment of a revision committee in August, because it's a 16, no more than a 16-month process, and to vote on that, to make it, you have to have more than 15% of the electorate vote in it, so it would make sense to have that, if we're going to have a vote on a charter revision, to have it at the general municipal election in November of next year, so that's what, why we're looking at August, and there'll, a lot more information to come on that and so forth. Amtrak, there's really no update right now, they're still, haven't come up with a decision, but they have no plans to start doing it yet, really good contact we have with the region here, so I am, I reach out every couple of weeks. We had some theft of equipment from our public works facility in the yard to the side there, all the items have been recovered, we're hoping to get them back soon, they're evidence right now, but we're hoping that the court will allow us to get them back, because the chipper and the trailers are going to be very needed in the next several weeks, so far, hoping that will be taken care of. And they're also looking at ways to put some secure, like a gate or something up at that facility, too. It's unusual, because the police are in and out all the time for fueling and so forth like that, and there are some cameras there, but, you know, they're making it a little more secure. I got a quote today from Tangible Analytics, for grant writing, they are, will charge you by the hour, and it's $115 an hour, and that would be for two hours a month, for just out there researching, see what grants might be applicable to us, and if they decide that, or if we decided that, yeah, that's a great grant, then they charge you by the hour to prepare that grant, and, and gather the data, and they would work with our staff here to do that. It's a little more cost-effective than the service provided by CCM. So I'm going to meet with him to talk a little further about that, they do not get a percent, they don't want a percent, they just love the fact that, you know, and he said, most grants you can figure are about eight to 10 hours, so we would have an idea of probably what it would be, so.
What was the R rate, I'm sorry?
115, $115 an hour.
Okay, thanks.
Tomorrow is a tax sale that we've been talking about, we're down to 11 properties, we've gotten so many people coming in and paying their back taxes, so it's looking very good, we've raised a really good sum, sum of revenue source from that. Done some, we've done building official interviews, so it looks like we'll be making an offer to someone in the next few days, so we're comfortable there, and then I was going to talk about pickleball, but you've already done that, so that's good, and I'll finish up on the fact that our sister town, Waterford, Rob Broll and I have had a friendly wager over the sports, this, not only the ECC basketball game, where the losing had to wear the other town's ball cap for the day, so he had to wear an Eastline hat, but we made a wager on the Eastline Waterford lacrosse game, lunch, he owes me lunch, and then he said, how about, then he said, how about we make a wager on the Eastline Waterford baseball game for dinner, and he brought that up, I said, that's fine, he owes me dinner, so, it's going well, so, but I, but, but things can change very quickly, so, but I've been talking with him, too, and one of the things, too, with the Southern Connecticut Council of Governments today, one of the things they're talking about doing is expanding regional human resources, and, you know, I think that would help probably address some of our concerns, with so many of the mental health services being absorbed by the schools, and so forth like that, to maybe we can start looking at ways to address not only our, our young population and school population, but our, anybody that might need some resources, so they're doing that, and Rob Broll has actually combined his youth and senior centers, so that it's all human resources now, so, you know, ways to look at, making it serve people better, which is most important, but also, you know, making it a little more equitable for the towns as well. And that, that's it for my report, you've, you've mentioned the Boardwalk 5K this morning, so I think that covers it.
I forgot that the pickleball was brought up, Commission on Aging, more than once, and at the last meeting, it was brought up again, there are a lot of seniors that are participating in that, and they've been using the community room at the community center, and it's very difficult to get scheduling in there, because there are so many groups using it, so many of them are traveling to Groton, I guess that they have, they have a facility in Groton, and a couple of other towns, so if there's an interest, maybe, Kevin, with your bedding, you might get the Waterford First Selectmen to go on a pickleball tour.
Okay, actually, they, Sue Comro is heading up a committee on that right now, so I'll leave that to, leave that to them, because they've got a lot of people who are interested and let them, you know, assist them when we can, but move forward that, so. Any member of the public that would like to address this at all? Seeing none, there's no selectmen's response, so we will take a five-minute break and come into, back to go, or, actually, we can do it right now, we'll take a motion to move into execu-
Yeah, move it, move to enter into executive session for the purpose of discussing real estate matters?
A second.
Okay, move to seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? We're in executive session, which means, you all got to leave. And actually, I have found out you just exited, because if you vote to come out of executive session, you've taken action, okay? So you just, we have come out of executive session.
Yes, with no action taken. With no action taken, we've come out of executive session, no action taken at 8:41?
Let's see. That's fast, 8:38.
8:38, okay.
Okay, and then, since we're out of executive session, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll move to, go ahead.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Just a second, okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you, we're adjourned.